Planning Board meeting. We have meeting minutes from last month to review. Paid a couple of bills. We reviewed the and acted on the English virtue wetlands application. And the R and B shut their own LLC lot line modification. Both of those were approved. Continued the public hearing for the Dunn wetlands application, which we are continuing again this evening. And we held a wetland, a public hearing for the Reish wetlands application. So it was a pretty exciting meeting. Ten minutes. Do you guys have any questions about the minutes?
No, I think they look good. Yeah. With the summary.
That's nice. Okay, so I make a motion to accept the June 11 planning board meetings.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a bunch of bills tonight. The first is for EHA for May services rendered in May of 2024. It's reviewing right preparing the Elliott Bowesman lot line adjustment resolution. Discussion of our correspondence with the board regarding the Beagleman submission. Telephone the planning board secretary regarding litigation matter. And corresponds with various planning board members. Work on a litigation matter. And reviewing the Reish, Reisha application. So it's a total of $11.11.65 hours. Four thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars, but with a municipal discount for down to $3,281.25. I think this is acceptable pay. So I make a motion to accept the EHA invoice for May in the amount of $3,281.25. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We have an EHA invoice for the month of June. Discuss again some bit with the litigation drafting, the English virtue wetlands permit. And talking, finalizing the permit resolution, talk to the engineer about the English virtue wetlands application. Viewing a CIPRA memorandum for the town, for the planning board. And first one, planning consultant regarding planning consultant memorandum. That's regarding the litigation that's ongoing. Total thirteen hours, thirteen point four oh hours. They're both $5,025, so that's a percy discount. Put the number down to $3,853.48. So I make a motion to accept the EHA June invoice in the amount of $3,853.48. Second time? All in favor?
Aye.
We have an invoice from the Rayner Group as they have done in the past. They break it down into two separate invoices for subdivision and site plans and wetlands application, well, wetlands permit. So for the month of June, 2024, the Rayner Group services were $783.75. To the subdivision site plan review was $701.25. We're attending a meeting and working on the EAF parts two and three for Westneck Creek. And starting to review the three, number three in fiber hall, a lot line modification. Guards, the wetlands permit was $82.50. And that was worked on to review the Dunn revised site plan. And the English virtue site plan and resolution. So I think these are very helpful. The Rayner Group's June invoice, I make a recommend to accept in the amount of $783.75. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have one additional invoice, and this is from Perillo Hall Hill. They are the town's legal representative for the Evans lawsuit. And the amount is $3,097.50. I am not going to vote on this, but if someone wants to move it and second it.
I'll move and second.
Move it.
You can move it. I'll move.
Make the motion.
Do I get a second?
Second. All in favor?
We got there.
We have five resolutions to review tonight. First is an extension. Let's see, I have these brackets. That would be sixteen. This is, I don't know. Twenty one, twenty two.
I have the trench.
The first one is for S eight twenty nine Westneck LLC lot line adjustments and extension. See the letter that they are requesting additional time because they're having a hard time with the Suffolk County clerk. We actually did get an email this afternoon stating that the deeds have been recorded. They were reported today and that we will be receiving record of that. And then the update of the plan for my signature. So they are moving ahead. This should be the last one. This will give them until, let's see, what's the date? July 25, 2024. Well, I hope it's the last one. So I make a motion to approve the lot line adjustments for SH twenty nine Westneck LLC. Resolution number 21 or 24. Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second one is for the Bloom minor subdivision extension. We were, they were waiting on getting the IA sanitary system in, which has been done. Was completed on June 30, I believe. And now they are, I guess they've been informed by the Suffolk County Water Authority that they can connect to the Westneck Water District. And that this connection will be done by the end of the year. They need these both to get through the next phase of the health department. And I'm happy they're moving ahead. This will take them to January 14 of 2025 to submit the final subdivision application. So I make a motion to accept resolution number 22 of 2024. For the extension of the finals subdivision application submission for the Bloom minor subdivision. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Short. So next one is for the Reish wetlands application, which we had a public hearing on last month. Everything seemed straightforward. The sole purpose is to install a new IA sanitary system to replace an existing single pool cesspool. And they're asking for the cesspool, which was 33.6 feet from the wetlands to be replaced with the IA sanitary system 58.2 feet from the wetlands. It's a very tight lot. This is really the best that they could do. And our findings was that the planning board finds the proposed applicant meets the criteria set forth in 129.5 of the town code. Specifically, the board finds that the project, proposed project will not negatively impact the value function or size of the wetlands. Applicants are proposing to remove an outdated cesspool and replace it with an updated system farther away from the wetlands. The upland sanitary system will have a positive impact on the wetlands as it will significantly reduce nitrogen from entering the wetlands. The proposed project will not have a negative impact on the quality or quantity of groundwater. Applicants are replacing an outdated septic system with a new system. The new system will have a greater separation from the bottom of the leaching pools, which will have a positive impact to groundwater. The applicants have demonstrated that the proposed project will not create a net increase in the risk of runoff. Because applicants are only replacing a sanitary system. No other work will be done on site, so no increase in runoff will occur. Moreover, as part of the applicant's DEC permit, they are required to install and maintain erosion control, controls to minimize any disturbance to the wetlands. The proposed project is the best alternative because of the existing location of the residence. Due to the configuration of the lot, the location of the existing residence and the location of the wetlands. The applicants have proposed the new sanitary system in the best location on the property. The new system will be approximately 20 feet further from the wetlands and will result in less nitrogen from entering the wetlands. And the condition basically is very limited, just to follow the site plan submitted by Sherman Engineering. And work must commence within two years of this approval. So any questions, any discussion on this application? Good. So I make a resolution to accept resolution number 23 of 2024 for the Reish wetlands application. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have the Westneck Creek Cottage LLC subdivision CIPRA and secret resolution. So you prepared number two, the impact assessment. And number three, the determination of significance. Do you see anything outstanding on this? Or is it just very straightforward?
Oh, this minor subdivision is pretty straightforward. You know, aside from planning board approval, they have to go to the DEC and health department. Other agencies will be involved.
Supervision, additional supervision on this. Did you guys have any questions? Otherwise, I will sign off on the short environmental assessment form, part two. And I guess part three. And that leads to the Westneck Creek Cottage subdivision secret life resolution number 24 of 2024. Basically, Westneck Creek Cottage LLC has filed an application with the planning board of the town of Shelter Island dated April 1, 2024. Supposing to divide an approximately 2.71 acre parcel into two lots for single family residential use. And a park area that represents 10% of the overall parcel. Parcel is located at five Westmoreland Drive, Shelter Island, New York, identified as Suffolk County tax map 718 132.1. We passed, the secret resolution is determined to unlisted act. And so we're going to resolve, the idea here is call this a negative declaration of significance. And we'd like to adopt it. So I make a motion, do you have any questions about this resolution? So I make a motion to accept resolution number 24 of 2024. For the Westneck Creek Cottage subdivision secret list resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The last resolution act on is for Sixty and Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Hall Lot Line Adjustment. This would be extension number 25 of 2024. Received a letter from the attorney, John Wagner, asking for another 30 day extension. Basically, they have the health department, they have the deeds recorded. It's just trying to get the final mat to us with, so I can sign it and they can submit it and record it. So I don't think this, think this is very straightforward, but.
Can we change the, it's 25 of 23.
Fifteen forty four. Yeah, I think this would be 24. So I make a motion to accept the resolution number 25 of 2024. The extension of approval of lot line adjustment for Sixty and Lord Road and Three Borough Hall Lane LLC. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we had a public hearing for the Dunn wetlands application from last month. It's continuing today. We have two bits of correspondence, one from Karen Hoag, the attorney for the applicant. And then late this afternoon from Reed Karen, the senior building inspector for the town. And I just want to read this very short note from Reed Karen. Ian, I did some research today after our conversation. And I'm satisfied that the Dunn lots at 18 and 20 Pecanic Avenue have been merged so that the, so that hurdle appears to have been accomplished.
I'm assuming, I'm assuming that was a typo. He meant to say title. But it is, it is subject.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Subject.
Okay. We asked you, we had suggested that revise your, your site plan, and you're coming in with a new site plan.
Yes, Jack. I'm Matt Sherman, Sherman Engineering. Something I hear with Charles Dunn, the property owner, Ray Reno, his architect. We have, we did take some of what the board's comments were last month, which were primarily deploy outside of the vegetated buffer. We had 64 some square feet within the vegetated buffer. Pull it outside of that area and shrink and adjust where we could and still maintain the overall project goal. So I've got a couple of things to hand out to the board. One is a revised site plan. And the other is a revised vegetation plan. So you'll see the date on the site plan is today's date, the ninth.
I'm just like, this is the one that you sent again, right?
Yes.
Just sent twice.
Yeah. Okay. It's in a premature.
This is like the same thing you sent.
Yeah, this afternoon, yes, exactly.
Environmental permit.
Biodegradable.
I've got a scale copy that I'll give to, give to Jessica, both, both copies of those plans. Just to go over very quickly, what we're talking about here is the, you'll see on the site plan, set up the same way as the previous one that was submitted. With the newly proposed plan on the lower left, in the top middle, the existing, in the top right, the proposed. So what we've done is we've reduced, we've removed all of the, all of the new work within the vegetative buffer. And then we reduced the work within the adjacent regulated area from previously, we were at 23, 2,366 square feet of pool, walkways, patios, things like that. 2,366 square feet within the adjacent regulated area. That's been reduced to, to 1,644, I'm sorry, to 1,886 square feet within that adjacent regulated area. So basically over the, what's there existing now, we've got a, we've got a change within the regulated area or within the vegetated buffer of, see, we were at 64, or excuse me, existing was 1,234. Our first plan brought that down to 64 square feet. Our current plan brings it down to zero, so it takes it completely out. And then for the adjacent area, we had existing, what's there today, just under 1,400 square feet of house. Our existing plan has 276, which is the same as our previous proposed plan. And then as far as walkways and patios, we actually increased our coverage within the adjacent regulated area from what's there today. Today, there's 242. And in our newly proposed plan, there's 1,886. So we increased the coverage within the adjacent regulated area by 1644, which is a, which is a reduction from what our previous plan was by, let's see, we were at 2,366, so about 500 and change in the adjacent regulated area for the swimming pool, the patio, the walkways and things like that. The overall plan reduces the patio, and there's areas of patio that are outside of the regulated area. So those numbers don't really factor into what I had just said. But our overall plan reduces the patio, the swimming pool, the walkways and all that by 760 square feet. Based on, you know, as opposed to what we had shown the board last month. Our separation distances, the closest thing on site right now to the bulkhead, which is that existing concrete patio, just over 24 feet from the bulkhead. So that's going away. The existing patio is just over 50 feet. The house is 64 feet. All of those things from the, from the bulkhead, all of that's going away. So now our closest thing to the, closest thing to the wetland is the patio. And the distance on that one is 76.1 feet, so just over 76 feet to the bulkhead, to the, to this close patio. Other than that, that's kind of the, everything else is the same as far as the buildings are concerned. The driveway, we did put in a 8,000 gallon cistern for irrigation to allow the plants to get established. Doesn't matter what you're doing, you're going to have to put some kind of irrigation on those plants to get them going. So within the driveway, you'll see on the site plan, on the proposed plan in the lower left hand corner. We've got 8,000 gallon cistern. It's fed into by roof leaders. The town code allows you to capture 10% of the lot size from impermeable surfaces. Our lot size is just over 42,000 square feet. As luck should have it, our roof area is just about 10% of that at 4,200 square feet. So we're going to capture the runoff from the roof, send it into that 8,000 gallon cistern. It's a couple of overflow dry wells in case the cistern gets inundated. So that's all up in the driveway area. It meets the health department regulations as far as distances from the sanitary system and distances from the supply well. There are, you'll see on the vegetation plan, there's a couple of trees on the, what would be the northwest corner of the property. In the area of where the septic system is going to be going, we are noting that those trees are going to be coming out. Because obviously, we can't install a septic system underneath them within there. Other than that, it's, you know, pretty much very similar to what we talked about last month, just with those, those few, those few improvements that were recommended by the board.
Where did you say the cistern was?
If you'll see, there is four circles right in the middle of the driveway. And it's a, got it called out, closed, 8,000 gallon cistern.
Oh, that's harsh.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah. The, and what we're proposing there is for 10 foot diameter by six foot tanks. With a couple of 10 foot diameter by four foot deep overflow tanks. The grade in that area is at about a 15 foot elevation. So we've got plenty of depth to put those six foot tanks in there and still be two feet above groundwater.
Anyone on the board, any questions from that?
No, I think it's good. It's a reduction of the expansion. There's zero, there's zero in the vegetative buffer. No. It's the, what's the decking?
Decking's gonna, it. Yeah. Be even. In fact, so naturally rock resistant hardwood.
So around, around the swimming.
Swim pool.
All assault.
That patio around there.
Okay.
Is it on slab or is it on sand?
I've called it out as slab.
Yeah, we, you can put it on a pedestal system or we can put it on slab.
I counted it, and when we were looking at the site coverage numbers, I had counted it as being on slab. And we were at 18, 18% for total site coverage.
Yeah, number of coverage, it'd be nice, it's more permeable, just thinking that would.
Well, the other option would be to put in trench drains, perimeter drains and have the water bite to the dry wells that way. Which I do understand is preference to put them on slab because they, they don't even pitch. So going to put in trench, that would make us.
If the board would like to put that as a condition for approval, yeah, we can do that. That's not a problem at all.
Helps. I mean, it's in adjacent, so based on current, current code, that's fine, but that would be nice.
Again, just, can you just go over, what's the total reduction on the patio, like under the new, under the revised one?
Yeah, under the new plan?
Yeah.
Okay, make sure I get the numbers straight, because I do get turned around myself.
Well, you said the, like, the closest thing is the patio, and that's 76.1.
Yeah.
Okay, and then if I heard you correctly, you're saying that the overall reduction was 760?
Overall, for the entire site, yeah, 760.
Okay, but how much of the, of the decking did you bring back? I mean, the patio, sorry.
You can see that, actually, on the first page of the vegetation plan I sent you, I handed out, sent you. There's an outline in red. That's the originally approved patio. That's what we wanted.
Wasn't approved.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the originally.
Was the patio, yeah.
It's one of the P words.
So the, that area in red is what the, what we'd initially asked for. Then that gets reduced by 760 square feet to the patio, as you're seeing on this plan in black. So of that, the area that's within the wetlands jurisdiction, within the, the adjacent regulated area. We are, we'd originally asked for 2,366. Now we're asking for 1886. So what's that, 380 square feet?
A reduction.
Of a, of a reduction within the regulated area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is the, the spa same level, is it going to be, we have a cover, will it be extraction cover or is it?
Yeah, the spa and everything, the coping around the entire. Yeah, yeah.
Will the spa sets down so the auto cover goes across?
Yes.
Does anyone in the audience have any questions about this application or comments? Please come up and introduce yourself.
G V, right back, 16 Tittle Drive. In the office, next door neighbors. Also Tittle Drive neighbors. It's a Bob Cohen, couldn't make it today, but he mentioned that we're still not sure about this joining of the lots. That, you know, there's a board action that's needed on that. So I'm not sure that the building department can agree to join the lots, that's not within their jurisdiction.
I've heard from the town assessor that the lots have been merged, the building department today. And we have previously been shown recorded deeds from the Suffolk County clerk's office. As far as I understand, as far as anyone here understands, they've been merged.
Okay, so uh, I guess that's a point that maybe.
I, I have no problem putting as a condition of the resolution. Yeah, if it proves that uh, they, they are not, for whatever legal reasons, they're not, then the resolution is no longer valid.
Does the town change the policy, as you were?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So, it's not clear what the new policy is.
The objection originally came from the building department, and that's what started the whole discussion. So I don't know if you've hea- heard the email that our chairman read earlier, but that was from the senior building inspector. And he went, he actually, you know, in writing said that, you know, it's his determination that he was incorrect earlier, and he has changed his determination, so we can go by that.
Yeah. All right, I'm not a lawyer, so, but I just wanted to register that was our, our concern, and also, you know, the uh, size of the property, size of the, the uh, patio is.
Understood.
For the runoff, you know, it's gonna change the nature of the area.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience like to say anything?
Can I ask Matt one more question?
Yeah, please.
Matt, just, I mean, just because we, we are um, allowed to ask you this question in terms of the, being the criteria, and I asked you this last meeting about, you're absolutely certain that there's no other practical alternatives to this. And because I'm looking at the plan, I'm seeing how, if they had scaled the house back, they could have actually fit the pool well within the adjacent regulated area. And I understand that they, that's not what they wish to do.
Right.
But in the absence of anything explaining how that couldn't happen, I have to assume that that's just the answer, that they just don't wish to do.
But, yeah, and I, I take your point, and, and I, I respect that question too. One of the issues that we end up having when that question is asked, and we ask it ourselves, there's always an alternative where you're not gonna need to come to a wetlands permit, unless something like reish out on Hidden Path, you know, where there's just nowhere outside of the wetlands regulated area. They could build a 1,400 square foot, one-story building up in the right-hand corner and get everything outside of the adjacent regulated area. That's, that is an alternative that's viable on every one of these properties. That, when we're looking at this one, we're looking at a house that's 32 feet deep, with uh, parallel to the water, parallel to the road. In order to get the size of living area that they're allowed to have, they made the house longer and narrower, so they pushed it as close to the road as they could. You could say that the um, that even though they're allowed to have a house of this size, having a house of this size would not allow for the other improvements on site. And if that's the position of the board, that's the position of the board. But what they've done is they've made the house as narrow as they comfortably can, reasonably can, push it as close to the road as they legally can, in order to get everything outside of the vegetated buffer. So, is there an alternative? Yes, there always is. Is, is it a, this is a reasonable uh, construction for a one-acre piece of property. It's a reasonable amount of construction, especially in light of all the other wetlands permits that have been before the town board and the planning board in the past. This kind of construction, this kind of layout is very, very common. So, to say on this specific one that it's not gonna fly, I think we would have to, you know, I, I, I don't know, I'm not really sure how I could answer.
I'm not suggesting that they put a 1,200 square foot house wedged in the corner, but, I mean, I was just playing with some numbers, like, things in like the 4,000 square foot range, and, I mean, I'm not an architect, but just some little crude drawings I did. I can kind of wedge it in there and pull it out of the area, so.
Yeah, and like I said, you can always make a design that can fit, you know, to, to constraints. But when you're looking at the code as a whole, and you're looking at, okay, because the building is, is, you know, 90% of the building is outside of the regulated area. So, you know, looking at the building code and looking at the town uh, maximum lot sizes, minimum setbacks and things along those lines, that's really what dictated the start of this design. And initially, we were too close to the wetlands, until, you know, thankfully, the C H C and their review saw that we needed to update our uh, or correct our wetlands boundary. So we did that, and that's kind of what started this whole conversation of pushing everything landward a little bit, reducing the square footage of these different things within the regulated area.
I do appreciate your answer. I don't agree with that, but I do.
Yeah. Reasonable people can disagree.
Right, of course.
I guess the question is, could you fit in that small, could you fit a five-bedroom residence? In a, next, like, you could always make a smaller house, but the goal is to do a five-bedroom house, which is what they want to do. That's.
Uh, we have three people um, Zoom would like to talk, so maybe from left to right, Pam.
Hi there, good evening. I'm, I'm a little concerned that once again, Mr. Sherman is delivering brand-new site plans for a public hearing that was opened a month ago, and it's not posted online. And the C A C has not reviewed these new plans, so their report that they had on the old plans should be moot at this point. And this application needs to go back to the C A C for another review. I don't understand why we are allowing such a site plan to be, you know, submitted on the spot while you're having this public hearing, and no one from the public has had an opportunity to look at it, and neither has the C A C. So I'm going to request right now that this planning board actually adjourn this public hearing after the rest of the discussions this evening, so that those things can be taken care of. This is a terrible precedent that's been constantly happening with the same firm representing applicants and the public not being given information prior to public hearings. And uh, and I, I am going to urge you to adjourn this public hearing and have the C A C relook at this. It seems to me there's gonna be a discussion about de-watering for this swimming pool, and now the swimming pool is within the vegetative buffer. I mean, I can't even tell you what you're talking about, because I don't have the plans before me. So I'm just gonna seriously request that you adjourn this public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Uh, next person is Sean Davey.
Yeah, hi, good evening, can you hear me clearly?
Sure.
Hi, good evening. So briefly, I think this application is an interesting example of many of the kind of questions and challenges that have faced the planning board in recent years, and how the law is applied. And so I wonder if the planning board could articulate the standard or considerations they're using. I applaud Julia's questions, I think they're right on point. So, for example, does the homeowner have a presumptive right to rebuild in the area of a pre-existing incursion into regulated area? Or does a burden or no reasonable standard apply, no reasonable alternative standard apply? If there is a presumptive right, does that apply broadly for any use? Or does the presumptive right only apply to previous habitable use with proportionality? And lastly, how do you specifically consider the criteria in the code of there's no additional risk to the wetlands, there is no increase in the runoff, and there are no practical alternatives generally? I think it'd be very enlightening for the board to articulate how they go through each of those questions in considering an application like this, because I, I'd expect that you'd get tripped up, because there are a lot of difficulties in the consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I, I think we'll discuss this application outside the public hearing, instead of trying to substantiate reasons for it here. Bob Kong.
Yes, I'm not sure whether you can hear me.
We can hear you.
I'm trying to be seen as well, but I guess they're not letting me be seen. Okay, um, well, first of all, I think to Pam's point, there's been no notice here of any of these new plans, or of the letter from the um, or of the letter from the building department. To correct Julia for a moment, it wasn't the building department originally opposed this. It was I had originally opposed, and the neighbors originally opposed it. And first of all, you did receive my letters concerning the merger. That still stands, I hope you had a chance to go through that. I don't know what basis the building department has, or what authority or jurisdiction they have to pronounce that the lots have been merged. Just because the tax authority reassigned numbers for the two lots has nothing to do with merger for purposes of zoning law. Number two, the, just because someone records a deed doesn't mean that was deed, that deed was legally recorded. As a matter of fact, if that deed was recorded as a lot merger, without the town board having an opportunity, or the town actually giving its permission first for that merger, then the deed was not only illegally recorded, it was willfully illegally recorded, and can be easily reversed, should the town board or the town determine that the merger did not.
Excuse me for interrupting you. You've made these points last month, we, we have a, a long document that you gave us, we've read through. And as we just said, we are going to offer as a condition of this resolution, if the merger seems incorrect, that the uh, resolution that we pass is null and void. So I think, we, we are not here to, the planning board is not here to judge the validity of, of the merger.
I appreciate that, and I, I heard what you, what you said on that. And I appreciate the fact that you're putting in a part of the resol- resolution that the permit would be conditioned on a legal lot merger taking place. The other point is to uh, what Pam Demarest had brought up. Uh, I think this meeting should be adjourned for the next meeting, so that the public has an opportunity to see the documents and the plans that have been submitted today, without anyone having to see it. You can't have a public hearing on, on something that the public knows nothing about. We have no way to ask questions, we have no way to take a look at what has been done here. Uh, I looked at the website, and I didn't see any new plans posted today, or any letters of correspondence that was provided to you on this. Now finally, could you tell me in how the um, conservative, the Conservation Advisory Council, how did they vote on this at the, their last meeting before your last hearing?
I don't know if I have it right in front of us, we did read it into the record a little while ago, and we were discussing it when we discussed the, the application.
Okay, I just want to just inform the public that the C A C voted 5 to 0 to deny this permit. It wasn't mentioned publicly at the last meeting, but the C A C.
It was, certainly was mentioned, but, yeah, that's right.
Not that it was denied, 5 to 0. So you have some significant problems with this. I think Julia's points as to the, the criteria here of not being the least obstrusive, you know, alternative here is, is not necessarily being followed. The other thing here, if this lot, whether it's merged or not, under the proportionality law that's being considered by the town board, and that may take time.
We're just, we're just addressing the law that's in front of us.
I know what you're addressing, and I, and I, this is a public hearing, and I have an opportunity to address this as a member of the public.
You mentioned this last time too, Bob.
I mentioned it last time, they've been changing circumstances since last, last time. You, you know, when you interrupt people of the public, like people in the public like this, you do, are disruptive of, of this hearing. So. Uh, in any event, I've said what I said, I think this meeting should be adjourned until the public has an opportunity to review this, this matter. I think that if a deed was illegally recorded, it was, if it was done after they had noticed that what they had done was not legal, I think they're opening themselves up to litigation. And I think that the town board should, you know, try to have some procedures in place here with respect to following the code on the town mergers. But again, I do respect the fact that you were making this permit conditioned upon the town, the merger, and if the lots have not been merged, this wetlands permit will, will be void. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else on Zoom? Some of the audience?
Yes, hi, I'm Joan McGivern from Timmy Latham. Here on Pat and Hope to answer any questions that you have on the merger issue. It's, I don't wanna belabor it, but it's our position that your town chose to adopt an operation by law approach whereby when two lots come into common ownership, they're automatically merged. It's a public policy choice that helps um, reduce non-conforming lots over time. And that's the choice the town made. We understand that you wanna make it a condition on some of the work, but um, it, it's not a question of town choosing to merge or illegal recordation. It, it happened by operation of law.
I think that's really beyond our planning board's knowledge and.
Sorry.
So, but thank you, thank you very much. Okay, so.
I'd like to respond to what was just said, and I'll limit my remarks to that, to the response on what the attorney just said.
Do you, I really appreciate.
Okay.
It's a public hearing, so everyone gets a chance.
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna limit my comments to what I just heard from the attorney. The attorney is incorrect. I think you all know that in 2018, the town board repealed the operation of law provision for clot mergers. And they, at the same time, actually, the weeks before they did that, they made void any prior mergers that had taken place by operation of law without notice to the landowners and the, and the town. That never happened here. So the attorney may be operating on the assumption that there are operation of law provisions that would automatically merge two lots owned by the same owner in other towns on the east end, and most of the other towns do that. But this town didn't, and therefore, the decision as the lot mergers reverts to the town board. Or if the town board delegates that to some other organization like the zoning board or the planning board, they can do that, but they did not do that. So that is the basic contention here, and that's my response to what the attorney said.
Thank you, Bob. So, how would the board want to handle this? Do you, are you, had enough comments to?
It does, it does seem that this came in, in the wetland hour. And so it seems only fair that it should go, I think it should be adjourned to the next one, that people have a right to take a look. And I don't, I'm not sure about the thing about the C A C, whether it needs to go back to them or not, that's, I'm not sure exactly how that falls.
The changes that we asked Matt to do, that came from, he was replying to our, our request.
He also made changes for there.
I don't think, I think people should have a right to do that. But the other thing is that the email from Reed, I think is really important. That is possible, you could just add a few comments about your knowledge of how things work with the building departments. You know, first noting an issue with a lot, I mean.
Well, as far, I mean, I think you're knowledgeable at this, and it might be helpful at this moment to throw that in, just so. Well, I think, you know, as far as with the building department, in the notice of disapproval, the notice of disapproval at the time that was included in the um, application said that the lots were not merged. He has since changed that opinion, as it today appears. So he has made, that's the new interpretation. When they go to get a building permit, if it's his opinion that it's not merged, that the lots aren't merged, he wouldn't give the building permit. So I think that's, that's, the board itself doesn't have the jurisdiction to review whether or not the lots have become merged or not.
But the concern I have is that if you're getting an application, and it's not in its proper form as it was presented to us, as was submitted to us, that was my concern. But after checking with other, what other towns do, it comes out of the building department. So the fact that I have this, you know, email now from Reed makes sense to me, so I'm willing.
It's, it's also interesting that usually merger provisions are set in codes to eliminate non-contforming lots, that's the goal. Because you don't want small lots in zone. So usually, when people, people mistakenly, a lot of times, put lots in the same name, the town wants them to merge automatically. And the property owner themselves are the ones that are saying, no, 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 this lot, I didn't want, I don't want these merged. I want them still as two separate lots. And the town says, hey, no, sorry, the code says if you put them in the same name, they merge. It's, it's, this situation is a little backwards, because you have the property owner who voluntarily put them in the same name to merge them, and the neighbor is saying, no, 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 they're not merged. So it's just interesting.
Following a little, the, the history of it, and there wasn't a merger by operation of law that was rescinded by the town, I know that. If the homeowner chose, the owner chose to put them together, that's a different thing than the operation of law completely. So, um, I, again, this is beyond our pay grade, and I'm not really looking to try to interpret this. I believe that the people were better suited to do so.
And if we put in that clause, I think it's appropriate.
I'm, I'm looking at, I found the C A C notes, and the main reason. I'm looking at, I found the CAC notes, and the main reason, it seems, it's like they've designed many applications in the past, is they're saying it's all due to the zoning code, which we're not reviewing, or what, reviewing the wetlands code. And they, they're citing 13312 F3, no building and structures within 100 feet of the, from wetlands, edge of wetlands, entitled wetlands. This, the town board and the planning board has a long history of not, not following that zoning citation. So I don't know that it's applicable here, but that's the main reason the CAC did not approve this application.
But actually, the, these new plans are important because it shows how they have scaled it back. So I don't think we can move forward right now. I think the public won't want to see it.
Okay. So.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
For a second. What we would like to see happen as the applicant is, if the plans do scale back based on requests from the, from the planning board last month. What we would like to see happen is if you can close the hearing, have your work session after the hearing, but leave it open for written correspondence for two weeks so that the CAC can comment on it, the general public can comment on it. And if everything is lined up, then we move forward next month. If it's not lined up, then we have to reopen the application next month. But that allows it to continue through the process. It allows everybody to make comments and, and everybody can weigh in.
Beth, what do you think? I mean, I'm, I'm happy with that, but I don't know how you would reopen it again. Is that, if, if there was something.
Well, and I don't think, it depends if if the board leaves the record open and continues, well, let's, if the board leaves the record open.
We shouldn't be, we shouldn't be discussing it in a work session right now. We're discussing it next month.
And if the board closes the year, you're still not going to discuss it tonight because there might be public comments, even if you leave it open for two weeks.
You gotta wait for after.
You still have to wait.
That's what I'm saying. We're not discussing it tonight.
It matters here or there, whether or not.
You do.
So I think the, the better procedurally to do is to just continue it next season.
Fair enough.
I agree with that.
All right, so I make a motion to continue the done wetlands application on our next meeting, which will be August 13th. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Okay. That closes our business meeting, and we open the work session. Current lot line modification subdivision applications, we have the Bloom Minor Subdivision. We just extended their final application submission deadline to January 14th, 2025. SH29 Westneck LLC Lot Line Adjustment, we just extended their deadline to July 25th, 2024. Sixty and Lord Road LLC and Three Borough Hall Lane, Earl Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. We're waiting on proof of filing, which we should have by August 23, 2024. The Elliott Bowesman Lot Line Adjustment, we're waiting on their maps. They have until November 12th, 2024. R and B Shelter Island Lot Line Adjustment, we just approved that. And so we have to wait on their proof of filing. They have to submit deeds for the planning board review and then for recording at the county office, and they have to sit to December 10th. Westneck Recodge LLC Subdivision, we just finalized the secret review. Are we in a position to prepare a sketch plan resolution? I think it's pretty straightforward, pretty simple. We did the secret review, so let's.
Yeah, that seems.
Beth, something you can prepare for us for next month?
I don't know. Is there any, I mean, is there any other discussion that they, or?
Typically, it's after we do the secret review, then we do the final sketch plan. They have to come, a sketch plan, a plan approval. They do have to come back to us with a final application, and that's when we hold a public hearing.
After the sketch plan?
Well, after we get their final applications, when we, we do the public hearing.
I just, I don't have my code in front of me, but that.
Got the order, right? There's the flow chart.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any special conditions to the sketch plan approval. You don't have to have the flow chart, right? You can tell the planning board.
I'm not on my desk.
I'm looking at it, thinking, I have, I have a lot of paper in here. Might have it. I don't have that specific application problem.
Sketch plans checklist.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, no, the flow chart. So we conducted the secret review. And then the application that opposed to, this is for, this is a lot line adjustment. Doesn't work.
Subdivision.
Any chance you have it, Christina, in front of you?
Flow chart.
You're certain of the next step?
I'm just not. Subdivision, yeah.
Minor subdivision. Thank you.
Sketch plan checklist? No.
The sketch plan. And then we conducted the secret review.
Everything's lost. You got it? I have too much paper.
Yeah, so the next thing to do is, is the sketch plan action. And then they go to the health department, the DEC, which they both have to do on this. And they have to get all this stuff together, including the health department subdivision process prior to submitting the final application. And then we hold a public hearing. Yep. Beth, you all with that?
Got a question on this one, too, if you got, when you have time for us. It happens. I went back to, to the applicants with the questions that the board had had last month about moving the parkland. So it's between the two parcels, so they don't have to worry about an HOA or anything like that, or just do conservation easement. So we looked at a number of different alternatives. And I just wanted to throw something by the board very quickly, just to see your thoughts. Basically, what it does is it puts the parkland between the two parcels. It's not a perfect 10% ratio on each lot, just because one lot is bigger than the other. So we've added a little bit more parkland to lot number two to keep the building envelope for lot number one a little bit more reasonable. So what it does do is it allows them to do a conservation easement or something to that effect. It allows the access to the parkland from both parcels. It gives them all a reasonable building envelope outside of the 100-foot wetland setback, outside of the 25-foot zoning setback, side yard and 40 on the front yard. And then what I also did on, on these two plans was, just for informational purposes, extended that primary setback out into the water. So if they decided to put a dock on either or both of these properties, they had an idea, just a general idea where that dock would end up landing. So the idea, what I wanted to do is throw this by you guys to see what your thoughts were on it before we pull the trigger on the applications to the DEC and the health department just to make sure that, you know, this is a viable alternative from your perspective.
Well, you know, I've, I've been pushing for this version instead because I think it's a lot cleaner. The one thing is the dirt driveway will have to be moved out.
Just have to move it, just relocate that to the south a little bit. That's not a big deal.
This is actually my preference, but I don't know. What do you guys think?
Does it, does it?
Picture it right away, probably.
Does it matter that one, like, doesn't have to be equal? There's no requirement that you have equal.
One lot is bigger than the other lot.
Percentage-wise, it's okay.
Joe, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I certainly can think about this.
I don't think there's any reason why the park area has to be equal or equally shared. I mean, this configuration works. I'm not sure why, you know, one portion of lot two stops and doesn't go all the way down what it looks like. You could take that area where the existing driveway is. Move it there. Has to be relocated and move that area down there. And actually, the reason why we did that is we talked to Jack Costello about the best place to put a dock on lot two. And it's north of that catwalk. So that's why we made that little jog so that we've got that area there that would be viable for putting it up. If, if I had an aerial photo, you'd see there's some shawling right in that area just to the south of the catwalk. And there's also a couple of docks on the other side of the creek, as you get a little bit further to the south on these properties. So that's just a, a better place if they decide to put one. So that's why we made that, that change. But you're saying that the, this is going to be a conservation easement. So that's a conservation easement on a lot.
Right.
So you don't have to have that setback from that conservation easement.
I thought last. Are you sure that? I'm pretty certain that the, there has to be a setback from the conservation easement.
There definitely has to be a setback from the conservation easement, but you don't have to follow that, what appears to be a front yard setback from that easement.
Would the setback be from the easement?
What I've got on there is a 25-foot side yard setback, principal side yard setback from the easement area.
That's just 25?
Yeah.
Big type.
It's 40 foot on the street and 20.
25 on the side.
25 on the side is for the, for the extensions to the future dock.
I understand. I understand that. But, I mean, I've, I've seen other instances where setbacks are from conservation easements are as little as 10 feet. So there's no disturbance if something gets constructed in the vicinity of the conservation.
Suggesting that's the planning board's. They're to do that, or? Because don't the, don't the park areas get their own meets and bounds? They get their own monuments?
There's two different things. A park is a separate parcel. We're talking about conservation easements on lots. That's different.
So in the Stiber subdivision, those were, those were deemed park, but even though they belong to the four different lots?
I don't recall that one again. We're, I mean, it, it makes it a little bit of a funky layout, but for the sake of simplicity, we're, we like this layout because it gives us that minimum setback, even if it's more than what would be required. Then we've got more setback than what's required. It just, it just gives them the, the ability to do a little bit more on the water side of that property when it comes to docks, assuming they can put a dock in that location.
And they could leave it like this. So the only question was, is it odd that one has a little bit more than the other, but Joe thinks now.
It's fully acceptable, accessible to both. Both deeds will say that they have full rights to use both lots.
The whole park area.
The whole park area. It can't be fenced off for one owner.
It is kind of a weird, it is just kind of a weird kind of like jag. It's like.
Well, they didn't finish it. I, I see what you're saying. It didn't extend all around. And then instead of moving the driveway, well, you could actually leave it and take that little piece out and put it over on the right side.
That's actually the first way we did it, was we had it down by the water. And then we talked to Jack and said, you're really getting rid of the best part of that property for a dock with that setback. So that's when we decided to move it up to the other side.
It's just more like aesthetics or.
Yeah, it doesn't really.
It's like, how do you divide, like, it's a little post there, so you know, it's like, it's weird.
And they're fine with it.
Yeah, they like it.
It's, they want it to be funky. They have just a lot of monuments they're going to have to put in. It's cheaper than an HOA.
Yeah.
A couple monuments, right? It's only two corners.
Three, four, five, six, seven.
They have three, four, one.
Yeah.
Not to mention the ones they have to put in elsewhere. I'm not happy with this. Do you guys want to think about this for?
No, I think, I think it's good because it's sad.
What I would say is, is this is better, but I wouldn't say we commit that this is the answer and we're going to definitely agree. You want direct renewal.
As long as we're all on the same page that this is not a bad idea, then we can start going.
It's better than the other idea. I think that's what we're all saying.
Then we can start going with the DEC and the health department applications based on this. And if we have to make minor modifications to those once they're in process, that's fine. But at least we can get the process started on both of those.
That seems reasonable. You guys think?
Sounds good. I'm happy with that.
You appreciate it.
So going back to preparing the sketch plan resolution, I think we'll need an updated map of meets and bounds.
That's why I wanted to jump into that point.
Thank you. Three and Five Borough Hall Lane LLC Lot Line Adjustment. The application was incomplete. We seem to have gotten paperwork today. What's that?
We're missing PDFs.
Missing PDFs, okay. Joe, can I ask you to take a look at it when we get a chance for completion?
Soon as I can.
Maps. We'll get them to you.
The maps, we have hard copy.
Which one of these?
These, these two here and.
Here's an app one.
I know you prefer working digitally, but
zooming is fun. It's so much easier. Or you could take, maybe, you want me to take, oh, look at it now?
I don't know that we need to take a look at it now. So if you don't mind, just the next.
And hopefully we'll get PDFs next month.
Yeah.
And then the same goes for this application we received that Matt Sherman put together a little while ago for Defow and Shearer, 11 and 13 East Branded Parkway. I know we got PDFs of this one. So, Joe, if I can ask you for next month to, to, to review those. Then the last, in the lot line modification subdivision applications, has to do with the white performance bonds, which we've made recommendations to the town board for, and we're just hoping that they follow through and which will, I hope, happen next week or two. Going to other business, wetland code committee report, the town board looked at the, briefly at the, those wetland code changes and has pushed it back to the committee, and we are meeting on Thursday. So next month I'll have more on this for you.
Was it pushed back with prejudice or just like they wanted more, or is it like?
No, I don't think it was pushed back out of prejudice, but it was definitely, I think.
There was feedback on it, they were saying they wanted some preliminary, yeah.
I think they found our, our planning board memo to be helpful. I have to speak for you guys, but I, I understood as you guys thought it was helpful. Site plan review, the, there's a new site plan reviewed code. It's actually the old code that was developed by the planning board. And the town board is now thinking of re-adopting it without changes currently. We've been asked to provide a memo like we did with the wetlands. We've been asked to provide a memo like we did with the wetlands code. I don't know that it has to be as detailed as we went into for the wetlands. Uh, again, the planning board was very happy with it when it was developed with the help of EHA. And so I just want you guys to look through it. Send me some comments and, uh, and when will you guys be discussing it? How long do we have?
When you get it back, we'll circle back on the agenda.
Okay, so we have, uh. Yeah, I'll send it again.
Send it again, please.
Uh, current wetlands applications in front of us to Soro, One Seagull Road. Um, we received a new plan from Matt Sherman. And Joe, you wrote a new memo on this from the revised plan.
Uh, yes. Looking at the revised plan and the memo that was written back in January. One of the main concerns at the time was the possibility of grading the sanitary system going into the boundary. This new plan shows a section through the sanitary system, and the re-grading stops short of the boundary. There's only 11.3 feet between the nearest sanitary looting pool and the wetland boundary. And the grading seems to terminate about halfway through that section. So there won't be any disturbance in the wetlands due to the construction of the sanitary system. Again, this is one of those, get the best thing, best fit we can get, given the circumstances. It's a very constricted lot.
So this, you're saying, is similar to Reish, this really nowhere else we could put a sanitary system, short of condemning the property?
Very close.
Yeah.
The only other comment I have is that it would be nice to have some idea of how the, the turf lawn is gonna be re-vegetative, vegetated. And there, there was a note, as you pointed out in your January memo, that, um, existing vegetation to remain. No new buffer plantings are proposed. But clearly, some turf lawn, 1,000 square feet or so, is gonna be disturbed. And I'd like to know what, how that was going to be addressed. So I don't know if the applicant, you submit something, is it, we're going back to turf, you're proposing turf grass, what kind of turf grass? I wanna make sure that it's, can handle the heat and not require water, or.
Fertilizer.
Or fertilizer, absolutely no fertilizer, yeah. So, um, wanna know more about how it's gonna be propagated. Other than that, I'm, I think we're ready to set a public hearing for this for next month.
Yeah, that seems reasonable. Maybe, maybe with a vegetation plan, I can get one.
Uh, Dune, 1820, Tuttle Hill, Tuttle Hill Drive, we just continued that. Seven Cheek, uh, Chequid Avenue LLC. Are you guys gonna discuss it? Do I need to get out of the room, or is that moving on to next month?
Are we gonna do this in executive session? No.
There was nothing submitted, so there's no.
There's no submission, but I know.
Nothing to do.
Okay, so that gets pushed off to next month. And that's it for the wetlands applications we're reviewing. There was a wetlands application, um, presented to the town board, Lopez at 64 Gardens Bay Drive. Has that been deemed complete? Should the planning board be writing our memo on this?
It's under review.
It's under review, okay. There, we have two special permit applications, five Winter Road and one Pantheon Road. They're all subject of uphold for the moratorium.
They actually will be going to the ZBA. They won't be staying here because the large home moratorium is expired, and we removed the special permit process to the ZBA from the large homes. So I think those end up coming off your schedule.
Okay, I was gonna ask you about the moratorium. That's, was three months from March 29th, so it seemed like it would be.
I believe it expired over the weekend.
Okay, June 29th.
So the permits are going to the ZBA now?
Correct, for the large homes, yeah.
Yeah. Great. All right, that's all I had. Um, anyone on this board have anything? Anyone in the audience have anything? Okay.
I thought something, maybe for the next meeting, we can think about, um, she was talking with our attorney about this, and as a board, we can set a time limit on people's comments. You know, we, we, we have the ability to do that, and I was thinking that, that might be more uniform and more fair to every, like, public client. When someone's speaking, you just take the.
And you get this amount of time and, and we won't interrupt you, and what's that?
Everybody just gets.
So I have to get one of those sand things that everybody used to have? Oh, you have it?
Oh, no, no.
Those jumping thing?
I must say, I must say, you guys have to go.
Get one of those.
Because it just might help us to.
I think it's not a bad idea to give them.
And not have to worry.
Maybe less of an issue when, now that things are going back to.
Jerry's sand thing was what, three minutes?
Three, four, five minutes. I haven't used it. Yeah.
I, I don't know that it's necessary.
I don't think so, because if you, you know, people get suspicious if you give them time limits.
Well, I'd say, I'd say the one thing is, I, I do believe that we should take the goal of when somebody's speaking, to let them finish. And if it goes on for an extraordinary amount of ti- time, then we interrupt. But I think it's especially hard with video, with people remote, to know when they're actually done or not done. So I think we should all try to be.
I, I do struggle when someone submits a long write-up, and then it gets unread and starts reading it or paraphrasing it, or I'm like one or the other, but, you know.
But it's a, it's a public meeting, and it's, it's like, it should be fine. I don't see, it's, we're in a democracy, right? It's like, you get to say your piece.
Yeah, write a long message, and then you get up there and speak in another half hour, 45 minutes.
Well, again, half an hour might be excessive, right? So it's all about, I think it's perfectly fine, we should try to at least give a reasonable amount of time. And I don't know, I'm hoping we don't put a limit on it, you know, with preference, but.
Well, I guess I came to that idea because we can't make it fair, and like, because we have lots, some people go on and on, others, we maybe try to make it shorter and.
I mean, sometimes when we're going through, actually going through something with somebody, it goes much longer than a three-minute time, because it's an interactive conversation, right? So the question is, I don't know, I think, uh.
And I was thinking, you, you could have somebody up, I just love this, because I work in this field, but you could have somebody come up with, with a disability, either in speaking or language forming, and then learn how. We don't wanna rush them. It may take them longer to articulate what they wanna say. I've seen that happen, so.
Yeah, and I think also that, what you said earlier is that this, I think our, the length of our public hearings are gonna lessen significantly going forward. So I, I'm in favor of letting people speak as long as it's not ad nauseam about things that are either A, not our purview, or B, repetitive. And I think that's a decision that we make as it's happening. Like we, just like we did tonight, you know?
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't think we need a timer as of yet, although it would be kind of fun. But, um, yeah. I could be, I'll be the timer, I'll be in.
No, I prefer not to have a timer.
No, I prefer not to have it. I, I.
I'll never have any, I need to, but I just.
I was taking light of it a little bit, so.
I want everybody to speak.
In all reality, I agree, and I think if this is gonna be something, I don't think it should be a committee by committee. I think it should be a board decision across all committees. If you're gonna do something like that, it should be consistent. I think inconsistent, right? So I'm saying, unless the board is willing to put it, something's in place, I think it's weird when we have to do willy-nilly differences in different.
David, I agree that we should let them speak, and I, I feel personally, we don't really need a timer at this point.
Okay.
I think we have something.
Here, Colonel Board, you can make your own.
I know you want us to be able to make our own decision, but my, my point is.
We just did make our own decision.
But my point, my point is.
Decision was doing, you guys did.
Is, if you wanna be consistent across, then it's much better if it's consistent. Yeah, that's my point.
I hope it's Stella Lagudis on the show.
There's no time limit, so.
I'm gonna be really, really quick. Um, this is with respect to Seven Chequid LLC, Chequid Avenue LLC. My question is, there had been some correspondence from our attorney back and forth on the 25th and the 27th of June, and I just wanna, um, ensure that it becomes part of the administrative record for this particular. Okay, so I have the copy of the correspondence, and if you can make that part of the administrative record, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Still have. Yeah.
Pam?
Yeah, hi. I'd just like to go back to the Dunn application for a minute, um, because obviously the, the, um, notice of disapproval has now changed too, because the plans have changed, and those setbacks have changed, and the square footage has changed. Would this planning board?
Pam, it's a reduction in scope, it's not augmentation, so really, the notice of disapproval doesn't have to change.
Well, I, I, I just thought for the specifics, and especially since Mr. Karen has said now that the merger was completed, I thought that might be wise to have as part of the application moving forward. And then the other, the other project that you spoke of was this West Net Cottages subdivision. And now you've done the secret review, but the EAF that was filled out by your engineer has not been published, and I see no, um, negative declaration written up for the public to see.
We'll have that on, we'll have that on the, we'll have that online in the next day or two.
Okay, all right. Very good then. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Bob?
Unmuting, okay. Um, just as to the process, okay? I appreciate the discussion that you just had, and I do think one more thing that you should think about is the context. Sometimes you will allow the property owner maybe 20 minutes or 30 minutes to present their plan. And I'm not saying you give the next door neighbor who's complaining, for example, uh, the full 20 or 30 minutes, but in the context of, in my own defense, I was standing up for an entire neighborhood, and I shouldn't be limited to three minutes. Um, and even if I'm talking about, uh, let me finish my sentence, Ian. Even if I'm talking about issues that you don't think are relevant, um, I do think my talking about the merger issue did result in a substantive change in what you were doing. So had you shut me down and not let me speak at all on the subject, you might not have put that provision in there that put a condition on the wetlands application, a condition, uh, that the lots were indeed legally merged, uh, for zoning purposes. So anyway, I'm just trying to add something to the process, in that give some consideration that when you have an association like the Heights Association or Tuttle Hill Drive Neighbors Incorporated, give a little more consideration for the number of properties they represent versus the single property owner who's presenting the application for permit for the permit.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else in Zoom? Oh, Amber, I'm sorry.
I'm sitting in for Benjamin, um, Dyad, this is one of the planning board liaisons, he couldn't be here. And so I was going to request that we have an executive session to discuss litigation on the Seven Chequid Avenue.
Set it up for me.
Oh, goodbye.
All right, you're right now, you're talking about?
Yeah.
We're gonna close.
Five.
Actually, close it up.
I just gotta get through this paperwork quickly, so I make a motion to close, uh, tonight's meeting, July 9th. Favor? Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Hi. Now get out.
Since the board was talking about setting.